Good morning, everyone. I'll call the Cook County Board of Commissioners' regular meeting to order on this day, Tuesday, August 26th, at 8:30 a.m. We begin our meeting with a pledge. Please rise.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Are there any adjustments to the agenda?
Make a motion to approve the agenda as presented.
I'll second that.
All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Same sign. At this time, we have an opportunity for the public to appear before the board, and as I look out at the audience here, I don't see anyone unless somebody would like to step up that's here? No? Okay. How about from the Board of Commissioners? Nothing? Okay. Very good. We'll move on then to consent agenda. Item three, looking that over, is there anything that you want to pull? We have the claims, the minutes from the August 12th meeting, the retirement of Life Lundie, and the to approve the retirement of Todd Ford.
Madam Chair, I'd make a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented.
Support. All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Same sign. Motion passes unanimously. Our first item on the agenda from Department of the Assessor will bring some information to us about the Thai Blatnik letter of support. Good morning.
Good morning. Thank you, Madam Chair and Commissioners. So, I worked with Kristin and Commissioner Sullivan to try and put together a letter of support for the effort in Washington to put a floor on the payments for the Thai Blatnik. So, I think this is similar to the language that we saw last fall, and it didn't make it through all the way to become law. So, we have a letter here. I don't know, you know, if it would be appropriate to address it to more members of Congress or send additional letters, but that was some of the discussions that I had had with some of the Commissioners over the last few days. So, open it up for discussion or any suggestions for modifications to the letter.
Commissioner Gamble?
Thank you, Madam Chair, and thank you for the initiative to do this. We had that joint meeting with the counties that are affected by this, and it's something that we're constantly trying to determine best course of action. There are some encumbrances to that process that are frustrating when the intent should be to try to fulfill the commitment that was initiated when this was first drafted, recognizing that there are costs associated with the properties that are owned by government that we have to, as taxpayers, you know, cover. In our discussions, we've been hesitant to try to make too much of this from the standpoint that we might lose what we have. Would that be a correct statement? In other words, because if other counties become aware that we're getting a special, you know, compensation, that maybe they'll say, hey, how come they and we don't?
Correct. Yeah, I mean, that's been part of the conversation since I've, you know, been involved with the Thai Blatnik legislation, is that, you know, we are receiving a really good payment for federal lands that a lot of other counties across the whole country aren't getting a similar payment. So, you know, that's kind of been something that we have discussed with St. Louis County and Lake County, that, you know, we want to be very thoughtful in our approach to what the solution is here to eliminate the volatility that's come with the reappraisal process.
Yeah, and I think that it's an important element, as it should be in any discussion relative to legislation, things that affect us, whatever we're negotiating for. And in this instance, I think it's a respectful consideration, and I think framing it that way as opposed to saying a tactical strategy, it just, we want to be mindful. We're appreciative of what we have, but we feel that in good faith and using common sense that we should be able to move forward with that sense of trust in the relationship. And when you see a significant decline in the value, forty-nine percent over the last, you know, assessment, you scratch your head and say, there's something wrong with that, and that questions, it brings into question the good faith. We can all identify with budget constraints and looking for ways that we might be able to reduce our costs, but we shouldn't do it on the back of taxpayers and communities have expectations in partnership relationships that contribute to what in good faith was determined at the front end. So, having said that, and we continue to work as counties on how we're going to approach this, certainly having support with the decision-makers is a huge part of this. My comment would be, from my perspective, is that the initiative was taken on the part of Senators Smith and Klobuchar, and the letter should be framed in the context not to encourage your support, but to affirm the initiative. So, if we draft a letter that affirms the initiative on our behalf, and then the encouraged support should go to the ninety-eight other senators and four hundred and thirty-five representatives. And I believe that those people, when we experienced last year their initiative to put forward this amendment so that we would have a floor that it couldn't drop below, that we should be sending letters out to encourage support from those that did not, you know, come forward with the initiative. There's a difference. So, I think what we do is, in the letter, the focus should be on affirming the initiative, and the encouraging support should go to the others that we want to see get behind this. That would be my observation.
Commissioner Sullivan?
I just wanted to remark that this particular letter is very similar to what was sent last year, and that it did pass in the Senate. So, the Senate is supportive of this, and again, it was a request for this letter from the leadership.
Commissioner Gamble?
Yeah, as a follow-up, thank you, Commissioner Sullivan. And when I had talked to Bob about this, and he mentioned that it was a request that oftentimes when you are trying to put forward something, and so your office will call and say, can you send a letter that supports what our initiative is? So, I certainly understand that. I did talk to Commissioner Stover's office, and just wanted to have an opportunity to talk to Representative Stover about this, and I think that his not supporting it last year, when it didn't pass the House, was predicated on other opportunities for revenue within these properties. I think that is a separate issue. I think we need to protect what is in place, and if there's other things to be explored, it's not off the table from the standpoint of looking at it, but what is in place should be supported. And given the fact that the eighth district is something that, this is huge for, these counties, I was on the assumption he certainly would support it, but in reading the history on it, his positioning was because he was looking at other opportunities for revenue. And I think we need to solidify what we have in place and protect this, so in the meantime, if there are other things that we choose to explore, that it wouldn't have to compromise this. So, I think we should, we should, number one, if somebody takes the initiative, I think we should affirm the initiative, because we're appreciative that they stepped up and they did this, and they certainly have demonstrated by taking the initiative that they support this. And if I had a group of friends and I wanted to go to the Boundary Waters, if I was the one that initiated, you wouldn't have to ask me if I want to do it. It would be the other people that I'd want to ask for their support. So, I think it's a very simple change in the language, but it's just being very grateful for the fact that they have taken this initiative.
Commissioner White?
For the listening public who do not have this letter, the first sentence of which Commissioner Gamble is speaking. Cook County strongly urges your support in amending the Thai Blatnik Act to set a permanent floor for the payment in lieu of taxes in the two thousand, at the two thousand eight level of, I can't read the number, there's a, do we know what the number is?
Two million twenty-five.
Two million?
And twenty-five thousand.
Twenty-five thousand dollars. There's a big sign across, it says draft. So, to simply acknowledge and thank Senators Smith and Klobuchar for their initiation of this, and to urge them to continue to support, that should cover the changes to this letter. Or is there more?
If you're asking me, I'm saying that if I took, if these two senators took the initiatives to put forward this amendment, I want to thank them. I want to be grateful, I want to affirm, and the information that supports it, the letters seem to carry a tone that I'm trying to inform you to encourage your support, whereas it seems that they're informed well enough to put forward an amendment. So, we want to thank them and affirm their initiative, and hope that their colleagues will come alongside and support.
I see.
So, I believe the letter that Commissioner Sullivan has drafted is acknowledging what they have put forth to us. Did you want any other kind of addition to the letter?
I think, given this is a draft, I would just make a recommendation that we affirm and thank them for taking the initiative.
Sure.
Yeah, as opposed to encouraging their support. We know we have their support because they took the initiative. That would be my recommendation. And in the fact that their department has requested this, and I'm certain that they probably have asked for the other counties that are supported through the Thai Blatnik payment in lieu of taxes, we're just, we're saying certainly, we appreciate the fact that you've been willing to step forward and recognize the points that we've made here, but I think affirming their initiative is the focus I would take.
I'll find out more in September when I go to the Arrowhead Counties. We'll be talking about this probably with the other counties, too, to see if they have done the same.
And one last thing, Madam Chair, is that the head regarding urgent is, is that timeline allowing, when were we intended to send this? Are we okay?
Commissioner Sullivan?
So, the request is to send this immediately. So, what I would recommend, and I'll make a motion, is to approve the letter with the amendment to express our thanks and continued support, and making sure that both on the front and the back end that we are doing that.
And I would support that.
Okay.
It just, it simply, you know, focused on what the letter, what their initiative has demonstrated, and we want to be grateful.
And I'd be happy to make those amendments today so that you can sign, and we can get that in.
So, we have a motion to that effect. Is there a second?
Mr. Campbell?
Okay. And further comments or questions?
I'll hand it to you.
All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Same sign. Motion passes unanimously. Thank you for putting the additions in there.
Thank you all.
Thank you, Bob.
Thank you.
Up next, we have item number five, the land services. We're going to have Neva discuss the Bates interim use permit, along with Tim, to explain all of that. Good morning.
Good morning. So, at the August Planning Commission meeting, there was a review of an interim use permit for the short-term rental of two wall tents on the Bates property. At eighteen oh five East Highway sixty-one, the property is owned, single-family residential, and according to the Cook County zoning ordinance, the short-term rental of tents is not an activity that's aligned with the vacation rental license, so we do process that through an interim use permit process. The Planning Commission received no written comments or verbal comments during the public hearing from the public, as part of the public hearing. The agent for the application, Eric Pierce, was present to answer questions on behalf of the applicants, and the general discussion was about the infrastructure and kind of the operation. Right now, the property is undeveloped, there's not a driveway to access the site, so a lot of the conditions that were attached with the approval are mostly about the infrastructure, that the driveway be placed, that the bathhouse be placed according with the application. The original application was requesting a five-year interim use permit. The Planning Commission felt that that was a little long for an initial approval, and so they made a recommendation for a three-year interim use permit and attached the conditions that were recommended in the staff narrative, and that was a unanimous recommendation for approval.
Okay. Interesting about tents these days, isn't it? As a rental, it works, I guess, not in twenty below, but it'll work. Any comments or questions for Neva and Tim? Commissioner Sullivan?
Madam Chair, I'd like to make a motion to approve the resolution for the three-year interim use permit for the year-round short-term rental of two wall tent campsites at eighteen oh five East Highway sixty-one, Zoned, Single Family Residential.
Support.
Any further questions or comments?
I think it's appropriate that Commissioner Mills supports it because he likes tents, so, yeah.
Facts.
There you go. Any further comments or questions about tents? All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Same sign. Passed unanimously. Thank you.
Thank you.
Bringing that up.
Commissioner Storey, may I also just add, since I've got your attention, tonight will be our first residential open space overlay district meeting in Hovland at the Hovland Community Town Hall. So, if anybody is interested, I know Commissioner White will be there, as well as our HRA Director. We'll have at least one contractor present, as well as a couple of other folks, so we really hope to get the word out, because it was a short notice, and I didn't have those dates for you last week. So, good plug. Thank you.
Good. Forward to the West End, at the end.
We'll get there.
Item number six, we'll move on to Auditor Brady.
Thank you, Madam Chair. This first item is a grant from the FAA for the Airport Taxi Lane Reconstruction Project. This is strictly for the design part of the project. That's something new that they've encouraged for some years to us, and now we're doing it, where we split out the design architecture from the construction. So, this is just the design portion. You already approved the contract with RSNH to do the design, which is the way they do this, with the promise that the grant is coming, well, the grant is here, to support the contract we've already approved. And this is for about ninety percent of that cost, and the rest will either be local or we will seek other funding sources. So, recommend approval.
Okay. Any questions or comments?
I'd make a motion to approve the FAA grant agreement number three dash twenty-seven dash zero zero three six dash zero two six dash twenty-two five.
Support. Any questions or comments? All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Same sign. Motion passes unanimously.
So, Madam Chair, I've put together a summary of our budget requests to date, and this is in preparation for next month, we have to approve a preliminary levy, and we'll have two meetings to do it, and we typically try to do it on the first meeting in case there are unresolved problems, we have a second meeting to finish that. So, this shows you where we're at currently with requests, the general fund, highway, public health, human services, those adjustments they've made recently, airport, the building fund. The new things this year are the bonds, the jail bond is new, so that's a big increase. You saw that on the earlier summary to the budget, you know, new spending this year, and then the CIP bonds from twenty twenty-four. Last year, we made an interest payment, but we did that using the federal ARPA funds, so this is the first time it's on the levy. And then we have also two, and both of those big bond payments are typically how those are typically, this is the way they're designed, it's to pay the next February, I mean, the next August, and then the following February. That's what you're collecting taxes for. But we also have interest payments in February of next year, they're going to come out of cash, because those were not levied last year, we were fighting hard to get their levy down to five percent. So, we did not levy that last year, so we still have that to pay. What I've shown here, too, is that federal ARPA balance of three hundred eighty-four thousand, we got two million dollars, we've used it largely on housing and other projects, but we have three hundred eighty-four thousand left. We were using some of that last year for bond payments, and I've put it in here just as a suggestion, it's your decision, it would offset those February payments for jail bonds. So, basically, using that revenue would offset the February payments for bonds. But that's just here for suggestion purposes. And then, the other big change here is I'm putting in one point four million of use of fund balance, you'll see in the general fund, it doesn't have to be general fund, but just to get our levy down to what you see on the lower right-hand corner of nine point one three percent. That's where we've been the last two years. Our initial levy has been in the nine percentile range, so this is very similar, and then we brought it down to five when we get to the end of the year. If you did not have that use of fund balance there, the general fund would be up about twenty-four percent. And then you see highway up ten percent, public health, human services up twenty-six percent. So, we've got work to do, but this use of fund balance, largely that's additional revenue that we've been receiving on our interest. The rates have been very high for three years, it's sustained for three years, but we're not budgeting for that. I mean, we've taken in excess of one and a half million a couple of times. So, we're putting that money into our fund balance, not levying it because, I mean, not budgeting it, we could be budgeting a million, a million and a half to bring the levy down directly, but interest rates have been forecast to go down each year, and they have not. So, I've been conservative. We've been building up that fund balance with that interest. Well, it's there to be used, so this is suggesting the use of that to get that levy down initially, and there's more there. We got our numbers, our basic numbers from the twenty twenty-four audit, and our fund balance of the three major funds, we're almost four million in excess of our seventy-five percent standard. We've been, we've set by resolution of the board that we're going to hold seventy-five percent in unreserved fund balance for our operational expenses, and we won't use that unless we have to. Well, we're about four million ahead of that, so we have that cushion that we've put in there from that interest money to use for this purpose. So, I'll stop right there for now and see if there are any questions. What I'm looking for is any information that you'd like me to put together, along with the Administrator, before we set the preliminary levy in September.
Commissioner Mills?
So, we have four million above the seventy-five percent, and then we'll be spending like one point eight million if we just follow this, and then so that would drop us down to two point two after.
Yeah, actually, it's an accounting technical thing, but the ARPA balance isn't in fund balance. That's considered an unearned revenue. We don't earn it until we spend it, that federal money, so that's why it's in the revenue column.
So, I just subtract the one point four from the floor?
So, it's just the one point four.
Okay, thank you. And the only, the only thing I would ask is, you know, last year, when we worked through the budget and setting our levy, we, you know, consciously spent it down to try to get that lower, and that's from fund balance, too, and we also recognize we can't do that forever, and so I would just like to see kind of a longer, or not a longer, a glide out of the spending of fund balance, you know, incorporating that. I don't know if we can do that very easily, but just to try to wean us off of that would be really, I think, beneficial in the long run.
Yeah, as interest rates come down, we're hearing now the talk that they will start to come down this fall, yeah, we won't have it to spend, and in the, if we don't get more federal funding, you know, we won't have that, so we won't have to worry about it.
So, big assumptions here, but, I mean, we won't have to worry about it, but we do have to worry about, because we need that money, and so, you know, just with assumptions, say we just kept this for two more years, we would have only two more years after this one of fund balance spending like this.
Yeah, and assuming everything's exactly the same.
Yeah, which it never is, but that's why I'd just like to see kind of that longer, how do we get out of this? Incorporating some of that into the levy, but maybe not, you know, but also keeping, using fund balance, because like you say, that's what, it's there to be used, you know, instead of taxing people.
Commissioner White?
And, well, reduce spending. I mean, that's, how do you bring down what you need? You reduce spending, and so I think we should really look at some of the positions we have that once were grant-funded, and we just folded them in to be county employees. And I believe it's firewise, it's the egg spec, correct me if I'm wrong, the egg position, I thought there was another that I, but we should really look at what we can afford, and as a board, we need to, we need to have a conversation about what we value as the people that make the decisions for our community people in the greater county, in the whole county. Do we, what's more important when the funds really start to go? Is it the physical health? Is it feeding, making certain our families have food? Is it helping with fuel assistance? Is it having safe roads? Is it having clean water? Is it having non-invasives anywhere? Is, I mean, what, is it changing how we teach people about protecting themselves against impending fire or emergencies? What is, we need to prioritize how limited funds should be spent, and even if we had tons of money right now, we should have that conversation to know what we value and what we are trying to do for our citizens of Cook County. So, to date, I have not had, been part of any conversation where they say, oh, yeah, I really care, as a group, we really care about this, we are, we can give lip service and we can agree to all these things, but what are the priorities really? When you run out of money in your own home budget, hmm, what do you not, what do you go without? Not that you're going to starve, but there are things you have to cut, maybe just for a little while, but you just, now you're not going out to eat as often, or now you're not making another trip to Duluth, or whatever it might be. You cut back because you see what's coming up. You can't, we cannot depend on outside revenue sources coming in. There are some, but we have no control over what the federal government will be sending us, or what the state will be able to give us, or even the nonprofits and the grant funding sources, because they all get their funding from someplace else, too. So, I just really want us to have an opportunity, Administrator, to get us together to have that conversation. Just talk about it, and we can't, the problem is, the problem is, open meeting laws, we can't have that conversation in depth without taking up a lot of business time or violating the open meeting law. So, I think we need a special meeting to talk about values.
So, I'm looking at this outline here. These are the kind of the topic areas that, you know, we're looking at. The highway is important, public health, airport, building. The highway is important, public health, airport, buildings, all of that. Are you saying you want to go deeper into all of these plus other areas?
Oh, absolutely. The highway department. Now, I'm not, this is not a slam on any of our directors, but, and I know highway, because I'm on the advisory committee, that he runs a fairly tight ship. He does. And they have it in place for replacing equipment. They have money put aside, so it's not all of a sudden they need to come up with $2 million for equipment replacement. But are there places where there can be cuts? That, yes, and I think we need to do a deeper dive into it. I'm not distrusting what the directors are saying at all. But I believe we have been voted in to, for our voters to make the best decisions for our voters. And, yeah. I would like to do a deeper dive into some of these with those department heads here. So if we have a question, or have them standing by, so if we have a question about what does this mean, they can just tell us. It's not an attack on anybody, but it's, it's a reality that we cannot continue to spend money like we have for, you know.
Administrator Treble?
Thank you, Madam Chair, and thank you, Commissioner White. I hear your concern. And hearing that, what comes to mind for me is, is having a short-term plan to look at our current budget, but then also some longer-term planning. So when I hear you talk about potentially a special meeting or, and a retreat, or some ability to talk about values, that to me is a longer-term plan, meaning we can accomplish that before we have to approve the levy amount for this year. With that, then I think we can have some discussion about what information would be helpful as we move forward to make sure that as we're making discussions about the budget, you have all the information that you need to feel comfortable in moving forward with those decisions. Short-term, I'm curious to hear what you think is needed before the next board meeting to feel comfortable with moving forward with this next year's budget.
At this moment in time, I believe the department heads, I trust the department heads' presentations, I mean, of their things are accurate. And as Commissioner Mills says, we have to come to a, figure out how to get out of this. And it is too short-term to figure out inside of a month. So, we do the best we can this go-around, but with knowing that we will actually have a sit-down and maybe figure out if things need to be done differently, or how we can modify what we're doing.
Commissioners Sullivan?
One of the things, Madam Chair, that I have heard is making sure that we are clear on what is mandated. And so it might be helpful for department heads or for Brady to help us make sure that we are clear on what are mandated services. And I think for that longer-term discussion, that looking at discretionary funds, how are we going to utilize those? Should we utilize those? But that should be something that in the long run, we take a look at.
Commissioner Gammel?
Thank you, Madam Chair, and thank you, Commissioners. I appreciate the discussion. Looking at, you know, the document that, that Brady has, you know, put in, it, if, if I'm understanding this correctly, the use of fund balance, part of, part of the formatting of this was a bit confusing to me, and it can just be me, but, but what I separate out is 2025 and what I separate out is 2026. So I have comparables under, under each. So if I looked at this fund balance, if that was a 2025 expenditure or a 2026 proposed, it wasn't clear to me. But just having said that, in, in the budget process that I have been part of in my previous term, we, we got three-ring notebooks. We had every department, we could see every line item, and I could go to departments and have a meeting individually with departments and discuss those line items. And that meant saying, well, do we really need this for sodium chloride? Do we really need that? And, and, and you'd get an explanation as to the rationale that supported the recommendation. And I find that the detail of that, you asked, do we want to dig deeper? Yes, we want to dig deeper. We need to have a structure that incorporates it into it, the discipline of evidence-based budgeting. And we set up a structure so that when positions change within departments, when positions change within commissioners, that the structure is in place to make sure that that discipline exists. And so if I look at this, and if I'm reading this correct, and I'm open certainly to correction on this, but our last year's budget was 5.16%. And if you look at the proposed budget right now of 9.13%, that is, that's nearly a double increase in dollars. That's nearly a double, if I'm reading this correctly.
Yeah, last, last year at this time, we were showing, for proposed, we were showing over a 9%. And then we cut it back.
True, and it's sort of a pattern. I understand when we do our, our initial, whatever, this or that. I think, I think a structure and a discipline will bring us where we need to be more refined. And certainly in, in attending the course through NACO, that, that discipline was, was evident. And I understand that we get comfortable sort of with the rhythm of how we do things, and whatever change is introduced, it's, it's uncomfortable. But it, it's part of our stewardship responsibility that's entrusted to us when we're elected to be caretakers of people's money. When it comes to having policies that inform the budget process, such as what do we do about fund balance? And we had this discussion many times in my previous term, and wanting to know, so you'd ask the question, in the context, it relates to the mandated as well. I think that is the place you need to start. What are we required to do? And I mentioned that Milwaukee County, that 80% of what they do with their money is mandated, and they're only allowed a 1% increase in, in where their levy goes each year. Work with that kind of restriction. I'm just saying that, that we need to build in this integrity and evidence-based, whether it's unfunded mandates, whether it has to be the discretionary dollars. And when I've talked to Commissioners before, I said, what do you do about this? Said, we don't support those anymore. Why not? We can't afford to. It's a matter of priorities, which comes to Commissioner White's comment about we need to define what are priorities based upon value. And so, if you look at where we're at right now, and not in the context, we always start highs and then we nibble away. But if we looked at this right now, we'd have to reduce this $527,000 in order to get to the 5.16. That's, that's a half a million dollars to reduce this between now and whatever if we think we're going to just get to where we're at. The other thing I would say relative to, to the fund balance, if we've said that 75% is where we need to be, when we've had these discussions, we said, so where are we at? Well, if we're at 85%, that gives us a 10% cushion to adhere to a resolution, a policy that we've put in place that we want to adhere to, except for exceptional circumstances. But we've always said, well, if this is what informed our policy, that we want to be at 75%, if you have a hardware store that makes what their projections exceedingly more than what they projected, they might want to build a separate wing on that year. They might want to do something. As long as we have the discipline, it can't be a generic perception. It has to be the discipline of looking at where are we? And if, if our responsibility is to try to lessen the burden on taxpayers with things that we can't control, this is the mechanism to do it. And, and we could, we can alter, you know, so that we maybe want to be at 80%. But you can look at the state of Minnesota with the surplus we had, and where are we at now? That's because of decisions that gets made, and what drives those decisions? So, for every $132,000 that we reduce our budget, it's 1% in levy. And that's what gets us to the point to say that, that right now, you know, we're half a million over where we, we should be. I would prefer to have each department to have what we had initially, which appears in the binder. I can see exactly every line item, then I could know. And if we did define our mandates, those line items could be bolded or something so we know, these we can't touch because they're mandated. We could look at efficiencies or things that might help us to be able to meet the mandate with these efficiencies reducing cost. So, it, it's a, it's a big undertaking to change the way you do things, but we, where we're at right now in timeline, I feel we, we don't have the information to be able to dig deep. We don't. And we need to partner, encourage with our staff that we, we look at as something to obtain. It should be a positive approach as opposed to a negative, that, that we're all looking to try to achieve this by working hard, rolling up our sleeves, and looking at creative ways, looking at partnerships that allow us to reduce the burden of government.
Well, we have had all the departments come before us. I have all the paperwork. You have it in, we have it in our computer. They have come before us to say, this is what we're dealing with. This is what we're cutting back. This is what we're doing. So I don't know if we have time to do a binder right now. But it's something that we can look forward to, and with Administrator Treble's help and everybody's help, we can start using that as a goal. Figure out what is mandated. Figure out how are we going to do discretionary? And then move forward with that. But I think right now, what I'm hearing is, we start in a month to talk about our levy and about our spending. So I don't think we can do binders right now. We have all the paperwork.
And I'm not asking.
Everything that everybody has presented.
I'm not asking for a binder. I'm asking for what the binder provided, which is the detailed line item for every department. We have not had the recorders. We have not had the auditor treasure. We've had, we've not had every department come before us. We've had public health, human services, we've had highway, but we haven't had every department come before us. I do not see a spreadsheet of every budget that, that we're looking at. And that's what we need. Everything that comes under the umbrella of governance in the county needs to be visible so that, and we understand it. And we work together with our department heads in partnership, encouraging to be able to try to be as good a steward we can of the dollars that we have. We say over and over again, we're asked to do more with less. The only way we're going to do that is to, Commissioner White pointed, identify what's important. And as you've indicated in, in your presentations and our discussions, that that inform, it needs to be informed decisions. Who informs that? It's our department heads that are responsible for that. It is the community that communicates where their priorities are. All of this information is something that we assimilate in making our decisions. So we represent that these individuals are evident in our final decision. Their voice is evident.
Commissioner Sullivan, did you have any thoughts?
I just wanted to reiterate that I don't think we need a binder, that we have everything electronically that's been presented to us.
I just, yeah, I just sent you the.
Same way you need the binder. We just need all of the documents by department.
So I just sent you what came out when we first presented the general fund, which shows all of the departments, the line items, and I just sent that out to all of you.
Thank you.
Again.
Thank you.
Now, so that's not, that's not all, necessarily all the information that you would want in a binder, but at least there, there were, the line items were, were sent to everyone back.
Yeah. And underscore, I'm not asking you for a binder. I'm not asking for these things engraved on a rock.
You seem to be emphasizing the binder.
I'm just saying, it's, well, because that's how we used to do it. You open it up, everything was there. I could look at everything, and it gave me the opportunity to talk with department heads, because I had a basis under which that conversation could be had.
Administrator Treble?
Thank you. I would just add, as you review the information that Brady just forwarded to everyone, if there are questions and you want additional information in some category, we're happy to answer those questions. I also think that it would be a good approach to have some future discussion about how we want to approach this in the future, next year, so that we make sure that all of the information is presented in the format that is accessible to all of the commissioners, and approved by all of the commissioners. So for this year, if there's additional information that Brady and I can provide, we're happy to do so. But changing the whole process would be complicated, because we don't have enough time to do that in a strategic and meaningful way. But I, I hear your concerns, and I think this is something that we can work on, shifting the approach as we move forward.
Okay. Commissioner White?
Very quickly, before I forget this. I've had a number of community people just say, oh, because of the 1.2 million doll, 1.2 million visitors we have to this county, not only does it strain our law enforcement departments and the sanitation department and our streets and our roads and everything like that, it's our volunteers, it's our community volunteers for search and rescue and fire departments, that, these are people that, they do it because they're community-minded. They're not getting rich, and they, it's 24 hours a day. They never know when. So, a suggestion was made, and I'd like to have us discuss this at some time, to have a, here we go, spend more money. Have a line item of some sort for the fire departments and for the search and rescues that they can tap into. I don't know how it would be set up, but to give them something to help them in their, in their volunteer efforts, you know? So they don't have to raise the money for their own fire depart, or for their own fire truck. And so they don't have to raise the money for their own ATV. But this is something, somebody take a note, because I would forget this. But this was brought up a number of times within the last month. So I don't know if I was speaking to people who were called out, because you never, they're very confidential about that. But obviously, with 1.2 million visitors as per the last chamber meeting, it's, it puts a strain on this little community. So, that's.
Administrator Treble?
Thank you, and thank you for that, Commissioner White. If it's okay, I'd like to go back to the, the budget as proposed, and I do have a question for the Commissioners. We had some discussion about that 9.13 percentage. I think for Brady and I, it would be helpful to hear if, if there's a cap that you would like us to work towards with that percentage, so that as we come before you next month, we have a goal of what we're working towards. And Brady, I don't know if there's anything you want to add with that?
No, that's, that is what we need, yes.
Okay. I just feel very comfortable with around that 9%. In the past, we've talked about having less than 10%, and I think that has worked very well, at least for the, the years that I've been budgeting as a preliminary levy. And then we get deeper into discussions. Also in the fall, we get grant reports. And so we may get some grants that will help us to be able to reduce that levy further. So I would recommend that we keep the, you know, amount right now just under 10%.
Commissioner Mills?
Yeah, I'm, as far as a preliminary is concerned, I'm, I agree with Commissioner Sullivan, and then trying to, to work down there. I, I hear Commissioner Gammel is saying, and having that discipline would be really helpful too, and to be able to get in deeper. And Brady, I really appreciate that document you just sent. It's the 2024 proposed, the 2024 actual, the 2025 proposed, and now the 2026 proposed. So it gives a little historical context, and we can get in there and, and see where those differences are and where those changes are. So that's really helpful, but.
Yeah, we, typically, we've, most county cities leave it a little bit high at the proposed for the same reason, that there's unknowns. And when you don't set your final until December, there's no reason to back yourself in a corner when you can't get out of it if something happens. That said, a lot of the, the things that we worried about in the spring haven't come to pass yet. The, the state cuts to a lot of things didn't occur. The legislature didn't follow what the governor's recommendations were, so we didn't see a lot of those hits that we thought were coming. So far, we haven't seen a lot of the federal, but I think, you know, they're still working on that upstairs. I think they largely hit the public health and human services. But the other things, you know, our federal. But the other things, you know, our federal payments, there weren't any big hits other than the secure rural schools, which is not a huge payment for us, but it's significant for Highway and School and the Fireways Program, but not nearly the scope of the BWCA or a regular PILT, which was still around 800,000. So we haven't seen those. The threat of recession was out there. I'm not really hearing that. So those, those big threats aren't there. But it doesn't hurt to leave, you know, a cushion until December. It's how much cushion do you want to leave? And people get an impression from truth and taxation. Whatever you set next month is what they're going to see at truth and taxation. That's in November, but those numbers get set. And what gets decided on September 10th, so keep that in mind.
I think in the past, we've always had consideration of setting the levy at a reasonable rate, knowing that things will come in, grants and different monies will come in and we can lower it. But you can't raise it if we have all of a sudden something really big come in that we're not prepared for. So the public should understand that, no, it's not the final. We can do the final the first week of December. So we have some time and some wiggle room to work this through. So.
Commissioner Mills?
Yeah, I just also wanted to point out the second page in our, or I guess it's the third page because the first one's a cover letter, but of this item also identifies our tax capacity is increasing by nine point, 9.4%. So it's hard to, it's hard for my mind to really see what that means. But it does tell me that there would be, that helps us as far as the hurt on taxpayers and the dollar amount. And, you know, it doesn't mean we can just spend and, you know, we still need that discipline. But it's just a bit of quote unquote relief.
And it changed a little bit since, I got new numbers from the assessor yesterday.
Okay.
And they'll change slightly over the fall, but down to about 7.21% increase.
Well, that, that helps less.
Instead of, yeah, instead of 33, 610, it's 32, 938. So, but it's still an increase. And the construction, the new improvement, part of that was larger this year, about 40 million of our increase in values. So some years recently, it's, I think it's been in the 16 million range. So that's, that's good for taxpayers. Because that means they're sharing, it's not just a raise in everybody's value. There's some new value coming in. So that's some positive.
Yeah, I think defining tax capacity for the public is, is important.
Yeah, this was, these are just estimated market value numbers that came in.
Right. And so how that affects public is when they, when they see that going up, if they see that their tax exposure is going up. We read it on two sides. One is how's that affect me? And the other is, how's our tax capacity? Well, our tax capacity is going up in relationship to our evaluation on our properties, which homeowners aren't necessarily going to be pleased about. When you're looking at new development, new opportunities, which is the issue relative to preserve the bluff, these are things that are saying, we've got more revenue because we've got more people contributing to the pool. So that's, that's an important thing. But all of the factors that drive budget are the things that we need to understand and the interplay in order to know how that works out. Because I liaise on with the hospital board, they were talking about their levy at the last meeting. Their presentation was made by the financial people. Said we could be at 0%, 5%, 10%, 12%, 15%? Where do you want to be? The board settled on 15%. So when, in the past, when we talk about levy, we look at who has levy authority within our county. So the cumulative impact on the taxpayer isn't just us as a county. It is, as we all know, but when we represented it in good faith before the public, I would always represent the cumulative effect of all levies. Because otherwise it gets sold, it's only a cup of coffee. Well, it's, it's an expensive cup of coffee when you put it all together. And so I'm just saying that understanding, structure, discipline, all of those things are hugely important. And I, I think that the, there are counties that, that they begin the process in a zero base, you know, budget. That means we don't say where are we going to be comfortable. We just start with the idea that we want to match things out. And that's how we do it. And it's, it's a discipline. So these are discussions that we, that are philosophical, that can be had, that drive future budget negotiations. The more that we're transparent, the more that we answer the questions, the more that we roll up our sleeves and wrestle with these things, the more it is going to contribute to trust to the public. Because they see that they're doing what they elected us to do, which is to be good stewards of their resources.
Commissioner Mills?
Yeah, I appreciate that. And Brady, maybe would it be helpful to talk a little bit about the fire districts and, and what authority they have? Just based on Commissioner White's concern about making sure we have the resources to.
Well, in the unorganized area, that's, that's a county levy. And that's where it appears, is on the county line. Now, city, towns, they set their own levies, include their fire with that. But in the unorganized areas, the Gunflint Trail, et cetera. But they present that to us and they can, it's going to affect them in that fire district. But they can raise, request a higher levy from the board and raise those funds. Often reluctant to do that because it affects their, their narrow fire district. And I, you know, there's a lot of mutual aid. So these, these separate departments are, in some ways, they're, you know, they're, they're like one. They're departments of a larger department because they all support each other and all these things. So complicated.
I represent three different fire districts. And I think the thing that's frustrating for some of the folks in the West End is when they're called out and there's not an emergency. Somebody decided that they should turn the fireplace on and all of a sudden it poofs back into the room and they get worried and they call for help. And then the help comes and it's nothing. So I think some discussions have been, should there be a little taxation onto some of the owners because of the fact they've had 14 calls in the last two months or whatever? Or gone up to the Boundary Waters to do, that's a mutual aid thing though. So there is some discussion among the folks and citizens about, you know, the calls are getting more and more as we, as we know on the North Shore, things that have been happening and were requested to go and help. So it's, right now it's a discussion. It's not an emergency. But it will be an ongoing discussion.
Yeah, I, I thank you for, I've heard similar concerns about false calls, maybe more on security side of things than, than fire side of things. But just kind of that idea of the use of resources for, for nothing, kind of. I guess there's, you know, the just in case. But one thing I just thought is interesting is between the different fire districts, you know, they, they each have their own culture, just like our various communities within our county. And they all have different requests and different structures. And there are some discrepancies between the different departments as far as what the requests are, what they're willing to ask for, what they're willing to tax for versus not, what they would rather fundraise and that sort of thing. So that's, it's an interesting element to it as well. And adds to the complication maybe, but it's just, just worth talking about, I think.
You can imagine being St. Louis County.
Yeah. I, I have a feeling I misspoke, so I'm going to say it again.
Uh-oh.
No, just of the use of fund balance. I think I said it for the general fund. But the general fund with no use of fund balance was a 14% increase?
Oh, okay, yeah.
Not 24?
Yeah.
No, that's the bottom line is the 24, sorry.
Thank you. What a coincidence.
Actually, a little over 23. Right. So I think I, yeah, 14% for the general fund, 10 for the Highway, 26 for PHHS, and then 23 overall, so.
Madam Chair, I do have a question about Public Health Human Service. Is, because we see this, you know, 26% increase proposed for 2026, is that with the assumption that the apartment, the department is staffed at the level that it was?
I believe that is true. Correct, Brady?
Yeah, I think it, I think it is. The, I think the main thing you're seeing here is that they've been using significant fund balance in the last two years. And now they've just pulled that out. And that's why the, you're seeing it all right now.
And I think when we look this, we go down the line here, we see the, you know, increase in dollars. And we see that percentage increase. Understanding what that reflects is important. So if, if we're saying this figure here, 26% reflects the fact that we're not using fund balance, that we have used it before. But you should also know that it's predicated on staffing at the levels that it was at the beginning of 2025. And because we are looking at reassessment and to the issue of mandates and whatever else, that that, that is a high figure that could fluctuate based upon that analysis. So I think that's an important thing to point out.
Okay. Thank you for sending that out, Brady. We'll have time later to really look that over and, and have a good discussion coming back in September for the beginning conversation. Okay, anything else? All right, then we'll move on to item number seven, Administrator updates.
Thank you, Commissioner. All right, I have just a few very brief updates, all great things. The first one is the YMCA. The flooring in the exercise room is being replaced and that will be done in September. As well as a lot of the equipment in their exercise room will be replaced. And we believe that will be happening in September as well. The basement remodeling project that was completed here at the courthouse is now done. We have some HR staff and PHHS staff that are going to be located down there. Some of our staff have moved. The rest are moving within the next few weeks. And we have a break room grand opening on Friday that Jana and Brooke have been planning. So we have a ribbon cutting. So we're really excited about that. So if you haven't been down there, it looks great. It's a very bright, open space and turned out wonderfully. The next update is we are setting beams for the Milde Hill project in early September. We will have a better date next week for that. That's important to make note of because as those beams are put into place, there will be a 10 to 20 minute closure for each beam. So we want to make sure that the public is aware of that and we'll make sure that we communicate that out once we have the actual dates. And that is it for today.
Okay, good. Thank you. Moving on to item number eight, employee concerns, Commissioner concerns. You'll see that I have provided a little bit of information here on this wonderful colorful chart because printing in black and white does nothing for me. So I asked Jana to do this in color. And I'm only bringing this forward because I was really impressed with the extension office having their dates way out in the future about, we'll budget for this at this particular year. And with, this is AMC program that I attended, understanding the federal changes to Medicaid benefits and how it's going to impact the counties. And we had five different presenters going over some of the different areas. And then at the end, they, they did the chart work. And so I think we're all kind of really nervous about Medicaid, what's going to happen. And really, it's going to take time. And it really won't go into effect until the beginning of 2027 for the work requirements. But up to then, there's needs to be a lot of discussion. And I do that with NACO, we'll do it with our AMC, we'll do it with the state, we'll do it with however many people will listen to us. Because it's really important to understand the steps. And, you know, not to be really down about this, but we're going to face administrative costs and burdens. And it's going to cumulative affect us. So I think that we'll be working closely with PHHS because they'll be getting updates also as we move along with, with the whole process. But anyway, I'm just giving this to you so you can kind of understand. Goes way out to 3032, so. And we don't know what's going to happen federally with elections coming up in the future. So this, obviously with everything, can change. But this is where we are right now, the timeline of Medicaid. So I just share that with you. You can tuck it away, do whatever you like. And I'll be updating you as we move along with NACO and AMC. The other thing I'll just report on, the Tofti Park Road is starting now. So they're pulling them from, from the Gunflint Trail to go over there to start doing some issues there, laying the basic groundwork. Working with, I just stopped on Saturday to visit with some of the neighbors and they're very pleased with the construction folks being aware of their property line, of their personal properties right here and the road is right there. So how can we work with you on not taking too much of your front yard? So, and then there'll be a pause and then they'll come back and hopefully finish it up by the end of September. So everybody knows that who lives along the Park Road. Any other updates or reports? Commissioner Sullivan?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Cook County Coalition of Lake Associations is getting ready to have their final in-person meeting. They meet in person during the summer and then via Zoom in the winter. And so they will be meeting on the 11th and have asked our new administrator to attend and introduce herself to all the presidents and chairs of the Lake Road Associations that are members. So that will be a really exciting event. I'm sure that many of you saw the article in the Star Tribune. Preserve the Bluff Group had an opportunity to meet with media, local media, as well as the Minnesota Star Tribune. And so that article was published last week and has created a lot of interest. WTIP also had an article about it. And I've had an opportunity with, to meet with some potential donors as a result of it. So that was really a good media initiative. Our emergency preparedness committee met and kind of talked a little bit about some of the items the safety committee is also addressing. And we talked about the need for code red and our evacuation app to be kind of sent out and shared with many, many new property owners that we have experienced in the last few years. We had a cybersecurity tabletop discussion and that worked really well. The HRA met and talked a little bit about supporting their strategic plan. And I'm sure Commissioner Gammel will share some information as well. They are also having a special meeting coming up later this week to talk about a resolution that's been put forward for John Petter's approval that was done by the City of Grand Marais. And we will also look at that as well. Personnel committee met and we talked a little bit about developing our charter, getting that up to date, and talked about the need for policies for us, all of us as commissioners to work in particular at policies that were kind of in the hopper related to telework, bereavement, emergency responders leave and others. The Flintlock Committee is to be commended for donating trees on their property to the project on the Little Devil Track River. They worked in concert with SWCD, their Soil and Water Conservation District, and took trees that were just going to be bulldozed and actually planted them to help solidify and secure the banks along the Little Devil Track. So that work is finishing up. Cook County Historical Society will be having their 100th anniversary this September 23rd. So I would encourage you and all members of the public to go to their website and look at their centennial dinner, Plink Trout Dinner, that will be held down at North House. And there are limited numbers of tickets that are available. So please take a look at that. Airport Advisory Commission met recently. Obviously today, we accepted the FAA grant agreement for nearly $164,000 for our taxi lane reconstruction. And this afternoon, the EDA will hopefully approve a grant to go to the IRR for reconstruction of the pavement in front of Hangar Row, the apron and area that is not covered by FAA funds. And so they're considering a grant of up to $200,000 that would go. go to IRR. So we will hope that that is approved and then can be passed on to IRR for their review. We had a MINDOT inspection, an annual safety inspection, it's called a fifty-ten out at the airport. And this surprise inspection occurred last week. There were a couple of trees that had grown up in the clear zone, which will need to be removed. That's just a constant effort that they have at the airport. And a photo will be taken upon completion of that work and will be sent to MINDOT Aeronautics so they know we have done due diligence. And it was also pointed out, we need to consider an improvement in our boat situation down at the seaplane base in case of emergency. Apparently there is grant money available to secure a more appropriate speedboat for us, so we will be looking into that. So to meet any potential needs, if something, there were to be some kind of emergency at the seaplane base. And then they announced that the annual head, annual Arrowhead Eagles Fly-In Drive-In Pancake Breakfast is coming up. That's their big fundraiser for scholarships. And that will be on Saturday, September 27th in the morning. So we hope that there will be another big crowd and they can have a couple of more scholarships that go out as a result of that. And then lastly, I'm going to get a little prop. Many of you have probably read the book Gunflint Burning, but there's an individual mentioned in there that I would like to give some recognition to this morning. So Michael Valentini and his wife Sally, who have been residents of the Gunflint Trail for a long time, have left the county. And about a week and a half ago, there was a farewell for them up at the Seagull Community Center, was sponsored by the Gunflint Fire Department. And Michael provided decades of service and leadership on the Gunflint Trail and also to all of Cook County and really left an enduring mark on our community. His commitment to public safety, willingness to respond at all hours, his steadfast guidance in times of crisis, whether it be the Ham Lake Fire, search and rescues, medical calls, have all made a really huge difference for our community and for our visitors. And he led with skill and professionalism and compassion. He has really inspired a lot of other firefighters, people to step up, to volunteer in all our fire departments throughout the community. And for those of you that don't know Valentini's story, back in nineteen ninety-nine during the blowdown, he came here, he was in the process of moving here with his wife Sally. And in nineteen ninety-nine, President Bill Clinton declared Cook County a disaster area. And based on that declaration, Cook County wrote their first FEMA Hazard Mitigation Plan, which we're now revising again. And Mike Valentini and others on the trail installed a hundred and eighty-eight sprinkler systems after the blowdown to try to protect our community from fire. And there was a grant from the federal government, believe it or not, that paid for seventy-five percent of all the costs of those sprinkler systems, with the other twenty-five percent being paid for by property owners. And as quoted in this book, Gary Griffith's book, Valentines, who had a rustic cabin at the end of the Gunflint Trail, were trying to move at that point from Chisholm to SAG permanently. And he came here and started installing fire systems, sprinkler systems, knowing that there was going to be a fire. And in May of two thousand and seven, everyone was really glad they had installed those sprinkler systems when the Ham Lake Fire broke out. Valentini was running around with his head cut off, trying to help start those systems and protect our community members. His leadership has strengthened the fire department, built community trust, and he's coordinated responses time after time again. And he's donated pumps as he's left our community and different items to help continue to protect and provide for community service. And so as they leave the county and are moving to their new home, we really wish them the best and we appreciate his steadfast and respected leadership and hope that their new community appreciates them as much and as deeply as all of we do. And that's the end of my report.
Knowing the work that he's done, he probably hasn't done yet. He'll find something new in the new community. So thank you for that tribute, absolutely. Mr. Gamble?
Yeah, yeah. Thank you, Commissioner Sullivan. It's great to recognize people who have served us well. I appreciate that. I was going to ask, because this tree issue at the airport, so this is a surprise inspection and they said some trees had grown above the height that they considered to be safe. How simple a process is it to just go out there and say, okay, fine, go out and cut it? What hoops do we have to jump through?
So we do have to keep the clear zone cut and they are constantly out there brushing and cutting trees. What is happening on the west side of the runway at this point in time is that those are mature, big pines. And so we actually will be, will be seeking bids next month to have those removed. But certain areas, we do have environmental issues, we have to be very careful, and we do work with the MPC, MPC and also with the EPA to make sure we are following all the guidelines necessary.
And, and thank you for that. The question pertains, a lot of times fulfilling, you know, requirement, it's how easy is it to do that? And it's, if it's simply identifying an issue and then we can resolve it, or if it's a lengthy permitting process or we have to do all of these things, it, it just encumbers the process to meet the objective, which is remove that tree. And so that, that was the reason for my question. If it's a matter of, so you identify it, now we can go out and we just pursue bids and then we do it, that's simple, but I, I just wondered.
The, the more involved process was really when that runway was extended a number of years ago. That had heavily involvement from a lot of agencies. But what we're doing right now is kind of maintaining that clear zone and so we are able to do that on their own. The, the issue for us is at the airport, it's an extremely small staff. We have an airport manager and then hired outside of county contract are a couple of other people that Rodney Roy employs to help him do that work. But it is absolutely amazing to see the work that they do each year. I hop in a pickup truck, I ride up and down the taxi lane from one end to the other to see what progress there is. And I have encouraged our new county administrator to take that same little trip, get a tour of the airport to get an idea of the incredible work that they do. It's pretty amazing.
When we had the meeting on this issue, when it had been identified, we extended the runway and then we had that clear zone. And so we did what we thought we should do and then we had a discussion on whether we overstepped our bounds. And we had so many, as you mentioned, agencies that were there and it was mind-boggling the nature of the discussion. And it came out, because with all of the agencies that were involved in it, in that discussion and investment of energy and looking at this, somebody just said, you realize that this whole initiative was to create a runway for a certain airplane that is no longer being made? So it was like, are you kidding me?
Well, there are airplanes that do use that runway, the small Cessnas that come in, do use it. But, you know, I think we've become as an airport Advisory Commission really able to do the preventative work. We've learned about the long-eared bat, about the timing of cutting the trees. I mean, all those things were a learning process. And we've got a really good handle on them and I feel really comfortable with the direction we're going and the fact that we're taking our first steps in the next twenty-year master plan to continue to have that airport serve us because our medical flights, our firefighting are absolutely critical. And that means that our airport, whether it be up top or down at the seaplane base, need to be prepared to deal with the aircraft we have today and the aircraft of tomorrow, those electric aircraft that are coming in. And we've got a really good handle on it. So I'm excited with the work we're starting to do for the future.
Thank you.
Thank you for that report. Any other reports? Not having any other reports and we have upcoming meetings to note, but one thing is for sure, it's coming up Labor Day weekend, so the courthouse is closed on Monday, just for the public, for the public to know that. And then also in our agenda, we have the sales tax comparison through June of 2025. And then we received a letter of correspondence from the Schroeder Area Historical Society. There being no other business, we are adjourned.